Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council Study Session for January the 27th. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for our meeting upstairs. Following this one, so council, please take a look at that document. I know we went over this on Thursday. Is there anything, council, on this agenda that you have additional questions on, would like additional presentations on before we go upstairs?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Mayor, on 5C, we made some modifications or changes to that. I know Natalie addressed that earlier. Is that, Chris, we're all good to go on that? The one property?
Yes. Mayor, I just think it's the one property that everybody seemed comfortable moving forward, and the other two properties will be discussed by the Community and Cultural Development Committee on March 19th.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, and council, if I could also just update, it came up, donations to a nonprofit like this do not give rise to a conflict of interest, so this, that conversation, this can stay on the consent agenda. That's why this is remaining on the consent agenda. So there is no conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Just double checking, making sure that 7B for the East Ridge, I know this was talked about last study session. Chris, you want to add?
Right, so, yes, if council notice on this agenda, the final agenda, below that item, it says a yes vote is for approval of the zoning case as recommended by city staff. And I think we did visit with two of the, two of PNC board members who voted against us, and they were in support of this particular amendment, or this modified application.
Right.
So vote would be for the current zoning agreement.
That's correct, the PAD.
PAD, sorry.
The confusion's over PNC recommending denial. Changes have been made to the project. Two of the three non-vote, or no votes have said that addressed their concerns.
And I think Councilman Thompson also indicated the neighborhood net members also were in support.
Okay. So yes means approval of the project.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions regarding this agenda? Yes, Mr. Thompson?
I have one more, Chris. On 10D, on the council report, as I was reading through, on 10D, it's attachment two, where it talks about our ending reserve balance. In the past, we've always, there's always been a statement on there about the ending reserve being based on, or the numbers being based on a market correction, and I noticed it wasn't on there this time. Are these numbers, this ending reserve balance, are those numbers assuming that there is a market correction or no market correction?
There, oh, we've assumed there is a market correction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's in the, sorry, it's in the council report with attachments, and it is attachment two, one of six, or two of six, I'm sorry, two of six.
I have questions on that same agenda item.
Okay. Want to do those here or upstairs? There's a hearing upstairs.
I guess whatever's convenient. If you want me to ask questions upstairs, I can ask questions upstairs.
Oh, it's fine, go ahead.
The economic correction was actually one of my questions. The other question that I had is that, in all of our previous meetings when we approved these, we get the homeowner affordability report, but it's not included as an attachment in this year's. I'm wondering why we took that out.
Mayor and councilmember Whitaker, the homeowner's comparison is a part of the affordability posted on our website, and those numbers have not changed as this was discussed last fall. So there's no, there's no update to those. It's available on the website.
Well, right, but my question is, I mean, 2018, 2017, 2016, we've included it in every single report, but this year it's been excluded. So I'm trying to figure out why it's not attached to the utility hearing like it's been in every previous year.
This year is the first year that is part of a larger package. That larger package, we want to make sure that everyone's seen the larger package, which has all of, more information than what was included in previous years. So we didn't want to include that entire package with this. It is available on the website, though.
So my other question is, you actually emailed me the report. I don't know, where can I find a copy of this? Because I, I haven't seen this one in any attachment from any previous council meeting, this specific report.
That's, if you like, I can open it up on the website. It is.
No, I mean, like, has it been an attachment in any previous council meeting that we've had where this has been presented to council?
I'd have to go back and look.
Back when we did the original presentation?
I believe it was in a.
Yes, Mayor, councilmember, it was, it's attached to the November 4th adoption of the notice of intent. It is part of that packet.
This specific charges?
Yes, yes, it is.
So the other thing that I thought was interesting is in, all the previous years for this report, the, there's always been the big seven cities that we compare to, Glendale, Tempe, Phoenix, Scottsdale, Chandler, Gilbert. But in this year, as Mesa went to the second most expensive city in the valley, we started to include Tucson so that it bumped us down. Is that intentional, or why did we start including Tucson in this?
Mayor and councilmember Whitaker, we started including various cities, one being Tucson as it is comparable. We also started including some private water companies as well, so to make sure that we're doing comparisons with all. We wanted to be more inclusive.
Yeah, I mean, I just find that particular, that, you know, as we become an unaffordable city from our utility perspective, that we're starting to change the metrics and how we measure our affordability by throwing cities in there that have never been included in any previous year. So I don't know.
Well, actually, councilmember Whitaker, I'm not, don't believe that we're changing the metrics. The metric is the same. We're including more comparisons for benchmark purposes. The formulas that we're looking at are exactly the same. The dollar amounts that we would calculate for Mesa would be exactly the same. The only thing that we did was, we were asked if we could add some more benchmarks. The biggest one, including some of the private water, some of our Mesa residents are customers of private water companies and do pay significantly higher water bills.
And Mayor and council, I asked Tucson to be included. A lot of the cities that are on that comparison are half the size of Mesa and half as old as Mesa, and their utilities are newer, and their water, where they get their water from is very different than Mesa's. So we put Tucson in as another comparison to just benchmark ourselves. Again, I don't think there's wrong with adding Tucson. There's very few cities in the state of Arizona that are our size or Tucson's size. We're in a different league, and so we thought it would be good just to look how we compare with the next largest city that's actually more comparable to the size of Mesa than any of the other cities in the state of Arizona.
Yeah, I guess my point is just find it interesting that we have the Yes Unaffordable Utilities Initiative that's running this year, and all of the sudden, as Mesa becomes one of the most unaffordable cities in the valley, we start changing the metrics and shoving other cities that are more expensive than Mesa in there. And the other thing that I find particular is that if you go to Tempe's website and you do a search for their average annual homeowner comparison, these numbers don't match. So, like, help me understand the different metrics that we're measuring in which, I mean, Mesa is showing the second most expensive city when you look at Chandler's affordability report, when you look at Tempe's affordability report, when you look at the Valley Benchmark Comparison Report, which is a valley-wide report from a nonprofit, we're all showing as being the second most expensive, but then when we run our own internal numbers, suddenly our price decreases and we fall down further on that list. So help me understand the differences between what we're doing internally and what the Valley Benchmark Cities are doing.
Mayor and councilmember Whitaker, I can't address the Valley Benchmark Cities. I'd have to go and look at that particular report. I can say that we have met in the past, it's been quite a few years, but we've met with Tempe, and we reviewed their report as well as they reviewed ours. It's just a matter of looking at the formulas. Both of us feel that our, our reports are valid, it's just different ways. Will you look at the average water use of a Mesa resident? They may look at the average water use of a Tempe resident. That average would be different, and that might be quantified differently in the formulas. But we actually use their formulas, and we put our Mesa residents into their formulas for each of those comparable cities.
I just find it curious that it matched in the previous years, and this year it doesn't match. That's.
Again, councilmember Whitaker, we haven't changed our formulas. We haven't changed any of the information that we're using as our inputs. So the only thing that we've changed this year is adding additional benchmarks in order to have some comparable cities to look at.
Sure. Just want to confirm, 10B, C, D, and E and F are all of a consent, is that correct?
There's a public hearing, so they must be all consent.
All right, thanks.
Counsel, any other questions about the agenda for upstairs? Okay, the next item on our agenda for this meeting, item 2A, is to, is a presentation on the proposed Hawes Crossing development. The property is part of the Interloop District, and this development involves several zoning cases and development presentations, and, I'm sorry, development agreements. Welcome, Nana and Tom, gentlemen.
Mayor, council, staff did a brief presentation in December last year to update you on the Hawes Crossing plan area development that had been considered by the Planning and Zoning Board. And based on that discussion, there were items that came out from council, or directives from council, for staff to work with the applicant to address them and update the council on those changes. So the purpose of our presentation today is, we are going to go through those changes and the issues that have been addressed, both with staff working with the applicant. So the Hawes Crossing is a plan area development proposal to develop the 1,100 acre of land. And before we got to where we are today, the applicant came to the city, outside of the conversation with city staff back in 2016 of how the area was going to be developed with the proposal, and based on staff input. So if you look at this, this was the initial land use plan that was submitted to staff that showed majority of residential and pockets of commercial and offices. So the red is commercial, the blue represent offices. So based on this plan, staff decided to actually conduct a study because the proposal, staff believe was not really fitting into the goal for that area. And the way to actually do that is zoom in to the specific right allocation of land uses was to do a thorough study to help guide staff as to the specific allocation of land This is the second map that actually shows the initial iteration that had taken place. The difference between the first and the second was based on the continuous conversation with the applicant. The applicant actually worked with the State Department to bring in 316 acre, which is north, east of the loop, to actually help balance the land uses that were being proposed. This is based on the several, so this, the land use actually proposal went through several reviews with staff and all the various stakeholders, and finally were able to come to this conclusion or agreement as to how the land use allocation should be. This is the most current land use plan, what you are seeing on the computer right now. And this is a land use plan that was considered by Planning and Zoning Board with a recommendation to you for approval. So back to why we are really here today is to talk about the three major items that was discussed or council directed staff to look into. One was because of the city's adopted Elliott Road Corridor, which basically is located north of Elliott Road, go all the way east to Signal View. This project, just to be clear, is not in the Elliott Road Corridor. But based on the discussion, we wanted to make sure that the intensity and the synergy that is going to be created as a result of the Elliott Road Corridor, this development basically contributes to that kind of synergy. So with that discussion, staff has met several times with the applicant and has come to a resolution to restrict and basically prohibit residential within 200 feet of Elliott Road Corridor, both north and south, within the PAD, with residential only being allowed on, above the ground floor. So there will not be any standalone residential on the ground floor within 200 feet, both north and south of Elliott Road Corridor. So the only place that you can have residential is, it has to be vertically integrated mixed-use building with a ground floor being commercial. So that creates kind of, people living in any residential is going to be people who wants to live in that vibrant community, and it also is not going to basically create that kind of residential development that may impede the Elliott Road Corridor commercial activity that the city is planning or aiming to achieve.
Excuse me, Nana, go ahead, Mr. Freeman. What's the strategy behind that?
The strategy behind that is if you have basically vertically integrated mixed-use with a ground floor being commercial, then you don't create that residential community that maybe, may not be compatible with the Elliott Road Corridor, which basically is geared towards commercial uses. So you create that kind of mixed environment of activities still happening on the ground floor, and basically if you want somebody who wants to live in a residential is going to be on the second, third floor, which you already have commercial activities on the ground floor. So that's, that's the intent behind that. In addition, the zoning that you see in purple is mixed-use zoning district. So the mixed-use zoning district actually encourages that kind of vibrant mixed-use activity happening there. And so that's kind of the strategy behind that.
Do we have any buildings like that currently being built? I mean, to this, to this magnitude?
Gallery Park, to the best of my knowledge, Gallery Park was one of the first developments since I've been here that actually has that kind of vertically integrated mixed-use, which I know when it came to council, we had that discussion and agreed that based on, you know, there's going to be noise. People who choose to live there are people who want that kind of lifestyle, and it's not going to be that kind of, you know, quiet residential place that is really far away from where you have your commercial activities.
Hell Rancher kind of looks like that with the.
Correct. Hell Rancher, the development's going up at Mesa and Main right now. There's some vertically integrated mixed-use towards where the, the new visitor center will be as well. We've got some going down in the, the residence at Main on the other end. That should be starting soon.
All right. Thank you.
So the next item or the next discussion we had with council was to work with the applicant to make sure that there is extension or there is an access to the utility lines, right, located north of Elliott Road. So based on that directive, we've been meeting with the applicant and has been able to come to a resolution to dedicate 30-foot right of way west of Hawes Crossing to give access, basically to bring the power down from north of Elliott Road Corridor to Elliott Road. So then any commercial or any, there will be access to basically connect to that utility corridor. So that's the typical, and this is going to be part of a development agreement where all the property owners are going to dedicate that utility easement to allow access to the utility line. And then one of the issues that we discussed with the council also was to find ways to go beyond our standard conditions of approval to ensure any development going on that is in close proximity to the airport is compatible. So the city has several standard conditions of approval, but based on that discussion, we went back and worked with the applicant to make sure we even go beyond the standard conditions of approval. And some were the two major items that we've been able to come to a resolution on. One is to make sure that there is wayfinding signs at arterial intersections within the PAD. So this is beyond our current requirement. And the signs will include a visual depiction of the, of an image of an airplane to really, so when you see it, you know what it's trying to convey. And also, the applicant has agreed that in addition to our standard navigation easement notice, which typically goes with our standard projects, to also include the disclosure that the property is within, it's within, or it's in close proximity to the airport is actually included in the CCAN hours, which is more of a private agreement as well. So there are so many ways that you as a property owner, you're going to see it. You cannot, this is something that is normally going to be hidden in when you're signing your last, but it's going to be all over. You're going to see the signs, your CCAN hours, your leasing offices. So it's going to be very visible for you to know that the property is in close proximity to the airport. So those are the three major things that we, based on our discussion and direction from council, we've been able to work with the applicant on.
Nana, can we go back to the easement? Will you just point out that it doesn't include the entire, all the property, that there's a little bit of an out parcel there?
Yes, so if you look at this map, there is this out parcel. This parcel is not part of the PAD or not part of the request. So the utility easement, if you look here, this is from this edge of this parcel all the way to the line is 1,545, and then you have 338. That is the out parcel that is not part of the request. And then to the south, there is 727 feet of easement. So the easement excludes basically the out parcel, which is not part of the request with the Hawes Crossing development. So with that, staff is recommending to the council to proceed and bring the case for introduction on February 10th and for action on February 24th, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
You know, I always do. It seems like every time we look at it, it's getting better and better and better, and that's why I, I keep, I keep saying no, because I know we're going to get to a point to where it's going to be the best possible for our residents and for the city. I asked the airport for some numbers real quick, just to, again, exemplify why I am concerned about having housing in the flight path of aircraft. Between November 2018 and January 2019, there were 47 total complaints from the airport. 25 of those were from Mesa, so over half of the complaints were from Mesa. With the inside runway that's being reconstructed right now, and they shifted the, the aircraft to the outside runway, they're sending them directly over our house, my house, and Mr. Brady's house. So from that same time period, from December of, or November of 2019 to January of 2020, there's been 177 complaints. 121 of those are from Mesa. Those are 121 people that live in the same neighborhood as Chris and I and the surrounding neighborhoods that are complaining about the aircraft noise and the aircraft flying over their house. That number is what you're going to see, and the airport's going to see, and either this council or the Airport Authority Board, one of the two, are going to force the airport into flight operation restrictions. That right there is exactly what I've been talking about since day one. We went from 47 complaints to 177 complaints. We went from 25 in Mesa to 121 of them in Mesa. That's a huge increase in complaints. And we're going to add more housing in there so that we can have more complaints from more people, and you don't think that's going to have a negative impact on the airport. Also have another number, I was going to wait until we did our strategic planning session, but I think this really speaks to the economic activity that's going on in the city. In District 1, there was a little over a million, between December 2017 and December 2018, there was a little over $1 million in non-residential impact fees that had come into the city. For District 6, during that exact same timeframe, almost $12 million in non-residential impact fees. So we're willing to say we're okay not building economic, not having an economic engine in District 6, when District 6 is clearly, in my opinion, driving the revenue for the city when it comes to, to non-residential impact fees. And so I just, I think it's a bad idea all the way around to increase complaints from the city and then throw away all the economic opportunities that we have just to put more housing in so dairies can go away. I think it's a bad idea, and I hopeful that this gets tabled for some time. And again, like I said, every time it comes back, it's getting better and better and better and better. I just hope that one day it'll come in and it'll be something that, that this council can be proud of, and I'm hopeful that it'll be something that our citizens can be proud of and not something that's going to make a $2 billion a year revenue generator for the region go away.
Thank you. Okay, this is not on our agenda for, as an action item, so we appreciate the update on the progress that's being made.
Sorry?
Any other questions or comments?
No, the only, I, you just saw the last slide, the question is, will you move forward on that direction?
Yes. My hope is that we move forward on this schedule, certainly continue to air, I agree with Mr. Thompson, it gets better as it's time we look at it. So certainly, at, as we consider the merits of this, noise complaints from the airport will be something that we're going to want to hear more about, so I look forward to having that conversation. Mr. Freeman, you act like you want to say something?
I'd like the airport to come up, maybe, and, and talk a little about the concerns that Mr. Thompson has, Councilmember Thompson's brought up, the noise complaints, if you, if you wouldn't mind doing that. I appreciate what he said, and I'm going to preface my comments. I, I sit under, and several of us, room, sit under Sky Harbor's air path in approaching and takeoffs, and I hear 120 aircraft a day go over my house. These are large aircraft, they're not civilian aircraft, and it's loud, and I agree with that. But then you take the complaint process and the AO2s and 3s that, the AO2 for Sky Harbor reaches east to, I believe, the 101 freeway, and how many complaints does, does Sky Harbor get per year?
Thousands that they would get. You know, upwards of hundreds a day, hundreds a day. I don't have their most up-to-date numbers, but they're definitely in the tens of thousands per year.
So I guess my question is, what type of complaints are we getting? When, when Councilmember Thompson, is this Phoenix Gateway, or is this Falcon complaints, or just strictly isolated to Gateway?
Anytime Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport gets a, a call or a noise complaint, we follow up. We contact them either electronically or by phone, and, and the, the complaints vary. A lot of them are transient aircraft from Falcon Field or from one of the other, what we consider flight training airports. A lot of them are Sky Harbor over flights, that maybe the flight's coming in a little lower, or they're just wondering what that is. So it, it really varies. Not every, not every complaint or not every call is related directly to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport.
So some of the complaints, when they come in, are civilian aircraft as well as commercial aircraft?
Correct.
Or, I guess, commercial aircraft. And then with, if the airport increases in size and capacity at Phoenix Gateway, is there a chance that civilian aircraft would move out of Gateway and find a slower airport to work out of versus being at the capacity of Gateway?
If you look at what's happened to other burgeoning commercial service aircraft, that's typically what happens, is the commercial traffic kind of edges out some of that flight school traffic. The flight schools don't want to deal with lining up behind a, an Airbus 321 or a Boeing 737, and, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, the commercial service is what drives a lot of that traffic, and so they'll naturally move on to less crowded skies and places where they can be in their pattern a little more often.
So with that said, with, I mean, how many flights of civilian aircraft are out of Gateway today? The schools and such, helicopters and?
So last year, in, in, last year Gateway experience, we ended up having a little under 300,000 operations. 95% of those were training aircraft, so your Cessna 182 is coming and doing touch-and-goes or coming from Deer Valley to, to use our runway. They'll land and take off a couple times, and then they'll head back home.
All right. So I, I'm just trying to extrapolate, if, if commercial aircraft came in, civilian, civilian aircraft pushed out, it reduced the number of aircraft take, takeoff and landings at the airport, but yet we could still have a noise issue with the louder, or larger aircraft?
Correct. It would be a different kind of noise, different traffic patterns. When you have, when you have the trainers, they'll come and they'll circle around the entire day. If you look at, you're kind of that spaghetti map that's been provided to the council, most of that is, is, is training aircraft.
When did we last update our AO 2 and 3?
Just recently, 2018? 2018.
So we have the most current, I mean, noise mitigation for the AO renderings 2 and 3?
Correct. I'll let Mr. Bianchi speak to it.
But I'm going to tie it into that. When was Sky Harbor's last AO done?
1919. 1999.
So we're at 2017?
Correct.
And one of the things that we've done with the zoning overlay is we talk about the the overflight areas, the one, two, and three. Mesa has a very robust overflight protection. Most airports don't even consider a third or outer overflight area. So that provides us a little extra layer of protection, additional disclosure, which greatly helps us when we talk about new and residential proposals in these areas.
I think that covers it for me. Other than the AO three, the decibel limit is 65. Is that the number on that?
Yeah. So the AoA one is the the decibel level is a 65, which is the threshold that the FAA is most concerned with. Again, we talk about that robust protection, that AoA two actually goes out to the 60 DNL or decibel level is which is additional protection. And the AoA three is actually outside of all of those. And really, it's just focused on the actual level of overflight activity. And that's what we're really trying to disclose. It's not so much as a noise event or a single event. It's the overall overflight activity that could be attributed to the airport.
So right now, there's very little air traffic over, I mean, this proposed annexation, the aircraft, would they be going over residential properties? If they did, it'd be over AO three?
Yes. So all of the residential developments proposed through this would be in our AoA three. And based on our airport land use compatibility plan, any type of residential, whether it's multifamily or single family, is permitted in that AoA three area.
Okay. And you're not opposed to that?
No, no. Again, we've we've worked with the communities in developing these overlay areas as well as the compatibility plan and the zoning overlay. So it's all been done in coordination with one another.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ryan, you have a Fri friendly program over at Phoenix Mesa Gateway?
We do.
And is that working well?
We do. It's published. It's something we hand out to to the airline pilots, and it's readily available. And it follows the the historic traffic pattern where if they're taking out off to the north, they'll go up and bank to the right, south of the power lines.
I I don't know in terms of the cargo activity from large planes coming in, are you getting noise complaints from that currently? And is there a lot of that kind of traffic currently?
Councilman.
Other than military jets, aircraft coming through?
Yeah. Councilman Mayor Giles, the the really, the only major cargo events would be when Antonov comes or when the large 747 comes. Those are single-use events where it's a large aircraft, something that people aren't typically used to. That's maybe three, four times a year. And majority of those are calls saying, what was that really big airplane that just passed over my house? Less about complaining.
Less about complaining, but actually enjoying the aircraft coming through.
Correct.
Jen?
Mr. Smith, I have a couple of questions. So do we map or does Mesa Gateway map the complaints, where the locations are of the complaints? And, you know, where are they in what area of AO one, AO one or two? And also, the number of complaints, do we take entirely like how many people that is? Because let's say if someone calls daily, it might skew.
Yeah. Councilman Duff and Mayor Giles, we do map their addresses, who they are, where they're calling from. We report that every month through our through our board reports. And yes, we do we do disseminate between and differentiate between callers and number of calls, as Councilman Thompson before used the comparison. So in in this particular time since we closed the runway, we had 25 complaints from 13 people, whereas this year we had 121 complaints from 17 people. So those 17 people could have been those same 13 people, and they're just prolific callers. But yeah, we do keep track of both of them.
Are they concentrated in one area or spread throughout? Do you have that data with you?
We do. And we can provide historical data. This most recent event that that Councilman Thompson was referring to was was mainly located in Mesa and Gilbert. When you look at the Gilbert area, there's a few a few neighborhoods that are kind of at the end of the runway and the approach pattern. They've historically always been in the approach pattern. So their their numbers, those numbers are consistent. But typically, it's spread between Mesa, Gilbert, and Queen Creek.
And in the flight pattern, the AoA one and two, I mean, would you say that they're in one of the flight pattern areas?
We do. Currently, we do not have any homes within AoA one or two.
Okay. Okay. So these are, okay, not three, which is the majority of District Six?
Correct.
Majority of the city?
Yeah.
I guess I should say. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, oh, I'm sorry. Frankie?
I have a question. Nana, the different shades of the development, do we work with the developers around? I know at Gallery Place, there's different materials and different noise counseling, things that we are working with developers now. I'm not sure if it was used before, but now we be doing the same things with this type of development or any type of development that wants to have residential or urban, I think, urban density residential, medium-high density residential, would they be using different types of materials or suggesting from the city that they should use?
Mayor Council, yes, that's a standard condition of approval that they have to maintain certain noise decibels. And the way they do that is the material that is used in construction and all that to make sure that is an absolute requirement. So yes.
Okay. So the different shades require different the different types of materials?
It's basically for residential, you need to have certain inside noise decibels.
Sure.
And the way they achieve that is through, you know, the type of windows, the type of building materials and all that.
But I think what you're correctly, you're looking at the land use map?
Yeah.
So I don't know that it differentiates that too much. I think it kind of treats, correct me wrong, treats all that residential as long as they meet the standards.
And who's reviewing that? Is that the building?
It's the building division. They do review that whenever they submit an application.
So they irregardless of the zoning, they're making sure that building is meeting the sound.
That's correct.
Frankie, just, it doesn't matter. As long as you're in AoA three, it doesn't matter if you're in Eastmark or if you're in North Mesa, your house is still going to be required to have the same material. Now, if you were moving into an AoA two type area in the airport was okay with you moving into an AoA two, then you would have to do a step above what a normal house in Mesa would be required to do to attenuate that noise.
Mayor Council, so just to be clear, so single-family residential is not allowed in the AoA one and two. It's only when you're doing multifamily, which is prohibited in AoA one, you can have a council use permit. And with a council use permit, example being Gallery Park, that's why they came before you. But Ryan asks, the applicant is not proposing any multifamily in AoA two as well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you. So I think the consensus is to continue this conversation on the 10th of February. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item two B. That's the appointments to the Historic Preservation Board and Personnel Appeals Board. Counsel, if you had a chance to look at that, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Luna. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item three is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. I appreciate Mr. Freeman running the meeting on Thursday. I had the opportunity to attend the annual U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting in Washington, DC this week. It was a great opportunity to meet with several secretaries from the President's Cabinet, also meetings at the White House and at several federal agencies regarding projects in Mesa. I'm anxious to share with Councilmember Duff some meetings I had about the federal building, for example, but also some great conversations on some pending immigration reform ideas. The XM Bank is for the nerds out there is something that we've been lobbying hard for to help employers and manufacturers in Mesa from Boeing down to folks that make things in their garage. And it's fun to see some some real progress being made. Also the passage of the USMCA, US Mexico-Canada Trade Agreement. I was honored to be invited to a, I'm leaving tomorrow to go to the when the President signs that bill on Wednesday because Mesa had played has been playing a critical role in lobbying for the passage of that piece of legislation. So great visit. Mesa is very much on the national radar, very much in the middle of all the conversations that we need to be involved in so that the stuff that we make in Mesa can be sold other places and the people that that live here can get the benefit of their federal tax dollars. So I appreciate you covering for me while I had that opportunity. Anything else we'd like to talk about? Mr. Freeman?
I would, Mayor.
Thank you.
We had a ride, a horse ride from, you were invited, but you weren't available, from the Lehigh Community. It's about 120 riders ride from Valvist and the 202 freeway. And it was a good outturn. No, no problems there. And then I did a ribbon cutting at EBIT for Boxes for Uganda. And I was thinking, what in the world's that about? But what there's a group here that sends medical supplies in the steel storage containers to Uganda. And once the containers get there, they're kind of put into a graveyard and never used. And so there's a group here, a lot of the architects, developers, builders, they have utilized and leveraged their skill sets to convert the steel storage containers to livable quarters for the medical personnel who are serving over there. And so they're going to build, have a basically a plan inside the box. And when they get the medical supplies out, it goes to the hospital or wherever, then they'll build the box to their specifications using the materials in that country. And so it's Boxes for Uganda, and it was at EBIT. And it's starting right here in little old Mesa. And so EBIT is pushing it and giving the support. And I can't remember all the players on that, but it started here in Mesa and going around the world.
Great story. Frankie?
Yep. So a couple of things. Just want to give a shout out to Jennifer Pino, is a high school student here Mesa, part of the Mesa Mayor's Youth Committee, shadowing me throughout the day today. So welcome and hopefully you're enjoying our meetings here. Second, we last week, we announced the Asian District Corridor from Maine to Southern. Great press attention, great attention to that district that already has 70 businesses, Asian-owned businesses there. And there was a Lunar New Year celebration at MACON that I stopped by. We had a census booth there. Hundreds of people signed our census pledge on Saturday. So great work from the the task force leading the census efforts there this past weekend. So.
Great. Thank you for sharing that for us. Any other reports?
Yes, yes. On Saturday, I attended the Unity Walk and Diversity Festival at Tempe Town Lake, where all the cities came together, Tempe, Gilbert, Chandler, Scottsdale, Phoenix, many others, together to recognize diversity and inclusion and the importance of that and walked around a Tempe Town Lake with a high school band leading the way. And it was lots of fun. Appreciate that event every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
I have an announcement. So Saturday at 8:00 to noon, over at Red Mountain Park, we're going to have a fishing event provided by the Arizona Game and Fish and Echo Hispanics Enjoying Camping, Hunting in the Outdoors. But the entire community is invited. Bring your kids, free fishing rods and free and you don't have to get a license to fish. So I encourage you all to bring your kids and your families to come and fish for free at Red Mountain Park this Saturday, beginning at 8:00, ending at noon.
I'm going to predict that's going to be a very popular event.
Yeah, I hope so.
That's great. Okay, anything else? All right. Mr. Brady, what does our calendar for the future meetings look like?
We will have a study session this Thursday at 7:30. So we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you. Is there? Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Please.
I just want to make one announcement. This Saturday is the Historic Home Tour in downtown Mesa. Second, West Second Street Historic District in Evergreen will be featured as well as this Ryan House and the Women's Club. So that is 10 to 4 on Saturday, and tickets are sold online as well as, I believe, you can buy them at this Ryan House, but check the website, the Mesa Historical Museum. Thank you.
Thank you. And the the Mitten Home will also be on that tour. I'm proud to be a part of that. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to amend or adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.